...planting trees, clearing trash, and enhancing riparian habitat. About five years ago, the Parkway began losing drinking fountains. Mile 14.5 and 17, there are no water fountains. As such, the Parkway Half Marathon Committee has decided to align its future proceeds to help repopulate those drinking fountains and other similar projects. We just would like to thank you for approving this water fountain that will be along the Parkway Trail between mile 15.5 and mile 16, and that's in Hagan Park, which will fill the gap and provide a continuous chain of water fountains at reasonable intervals for Parkway users. We appreciate the opportunity to help fund the drinking fountain, along with additional funding from the Rotary Club, Parks District, and the Rotary Club and the 15th Anniversary of the City of Rancho Cordova. I would like to extend a special thank Christina James and Arkin for moving this project forward at a reasonable cost, and to Rotarian Ross Johnson for his assistance in navigating this project through the various agencies. On behalf of SACFIT, the Parkway Half Marathon, all the users of the Parkway and Hagan Park, thank you for approving this important project.
Wonderful.
During this process, it was brought out that there is alternatives for hydration on the Parkway. Someone says you could just run a hose out there.
We have a contingency.
We have a hose. Part of the conservation effort, a nozzle, so we don't waste water. If you don't want the check, you can have the hose.
We've brought a big check to present. If we'd like to have, I really would like to have all you board members and district staff up to take a picture with this.
We brought a lot of supporters with us, as you can see.
Play in the pot. All right, here we go. Let me get one more angle, because the light's a little off there. And one more. Awesome, thank you.
I'm taking my hose home.
It was your suggestion.
So far, there's been such a, I mean, I am just thrilled with partnerships and collaboration, and most especially with activities that are brought to us by our residents. So, thank you. I'm glad we were able to find that spot and make it happen. Thank you.
I have a quick question.
Quick question.
Yeah, we're, will this drinking fountain be in time for their race this year? Will it be in?
What did, Christina?
Christina, yeah.
That's why they have the hose, right?
Or are we at the mercy of permits?
We are at the mercy of permits. So, my schedule tomorrow has to start that paperwork with the city. They'll need drawings. We need to start a contract with Wells &amp; Cool Geotech, because there's a dry well attached to this drinking fountain. So, there's a bit of paperwork, but we've spoken with Park Services. They're hoping to get it on their schedule for late March, early April.
Yay. Yay, yay. All right. Okay, so we're going to go to item D2.
Thank you, Chair Reyes. Item D2 is a presentation of the final independent auditor's report and financial statements for fiscal year 2016-17, and I'll turn it over to Finance Manager Matt Goodell.
All right, good evening, Chair Reyes, board members. Now, that's a tough act to follow right there. I didn't bring any, I didn't bring any props.
They're all gone.
It's tough. All right, so we're excited to bring forth the audit a little bit earlier than we normally do, and let you know this process began back in September 5th, day one, when fieldwork started, when they observed, they verified, and they confirmed all our information and backup documents. On February 8th, the Budget and Finance Committee met to digest and to briefly review the contents of the audit, and now here we stand, February 21st, with the audit venture closing, so very excited about that. With us tonight is Brent Jones. He's a former tight end for the San Francisco 49ers.
Woo-hoo.
No, actually, this is brother Brett. This is Brett, B-R-E-T-T Jones. He's from JJACPA, which is an auditing firm that we've been using continuously since 2013, and I'm excited to introduce him, to walk you through the summarization of the audit, and to answer any questions that you may have. So, here's Brett Jones.
All right.
Thank you, Matt. As Matt mentioned, my name's Brett Jones. I was the technical reviewer on the audit this year. The partner on the job is somewhere on Mount Kilimanjaro as we speak, so I'm here in his place to go through the audit and answer any questions that you may have on the audit and the report. So, I just wanted to briefly go through the report itself, because it can be a little overwhelming if you're not familiar with the format. So, the first thing I want to point out is our audit report. That's page one of the financial section, and we're pleased to report we gave an unmodified opinion on this year's audit, and that's the highest, highest opinion that we can give.
All right.
That's really, really good.
Great.
Immediately following our audit report is management's discussion and analysis. So, this kind of describes the changes from year to year in a descriptive way, rather than just numbers, kind of describes what, why some numbers went up, some went down, more reader-friendly, I think. So, that's usually a good place to start when looking at the audit report. Following management's discussion and analysis are the financial statements themselves, starting with the statement of net position on page 21. The unique thing about government accounting is that the financial statements are prepared on a dual basis of accounting. So, the statement of net position is essentially full accrual financial statements, and then as you move a couple pages over, starting on page 26, the governmental funds balance sheet, that's a modified accrual basis of accounting. That's more similar to cash, shorter accrual periods, no capital assets, no long-term liabilities, so. So, that's something to keep in mind when reading this report. Following the financial section are the notes. These describe in a little more detail some of the balances that are in the financials themselves, very descriptive, lots of information in there. It can be very useful. And then finally, at the very end, we have our report on internal controls. So, this report, if we had any findings in internal controls, they'd be listed here, and again, we didn't have any, so that's also very good. In addition to the audit report, we have also issued our
Letter.
Used to be called the management letter. Now, it's the communications with those charged with governance and communications of internal control-related matters. So, it's a mouthful. This letter just kind of summarizes the audit, you know, what our responsibilities are, what management's responsibilities for the audit, any significant difficulties that we may have had, and there were none, any disagreements with management. We didn't have any. And then lastly, if we had any additional findings, they would go in the back here, and again, we're pleased to report there are none, so. Overall, the audit went really well this year, thanks to Matt and his staff. Really, really went well. And then, I'm here, I can answer some questions. I know we have at least one regarding the pension credit, so if you look at the statement of net position on page 21, you'll notice the net pension obligation. So, when we arrive at that net pension obligation, that's an actuarially determined liability, so that when the actuaries come up with a number, there's lots of assumptions that are involved in that, in coming to that balance from year to year, and then, and as those assumptions change from one year to the next, rather than recognizing it directly in the net pension liability as increase or decrease, they get recognized as deferred outflows or deferred inflows of resources. And if you look into the pension footnote on page 63, you'll notice one of the items of the deferred outflows are the differences between projected and actual investment earnings. So, what that means is the actuaries made projections on what the investments would earn, and it looks like they missed by quite a bit. So, what that caused, the deferred outflows to go up, and then over the next three to five years, those will get recognized as expense and increase the net pension liability.
Do you think that you could put that into language for people who have not gotten a CPA in their past?
I'm trying. Yeah, yeah.
I frankly didn't understand what you just said.
So, let me, I'll put, so when the actuaries make their determination on the net pension liability, there's lots of assumptions involved, and as those assumptions change from one year to the next, it's going to increase or decrease the net pension liability. Then rather, rather than recognizing that all of those changes in the first year, they get recognized as deferred outflows or inflows, kind of like capital assets. You buy a capital asset, then amortize it over several years. A change in assumption gets recognized as a deferred outflow and recognized over the course of
Okay, but you're saying deferred outflows and deferred inflows, and I'm just looking at a credit against salaries and benefits of 1.4. What does that mean?
How do we go from there to there?
Yeah.
Exactly. So, one of the deferred outflows, the differences between projected and actual earnings on planned investments increased by about 1 million from the prior year. So, to recognize that in the financial statements, it, that's, it hits that pension credit account. So, that pension, that 1.4 is a result in those change of assumptions. So, to answer your question about, does it actually reduce the net pension liability? Not necessarily. It just means it didn't increase as much in that first year. So, it'll get recognized as the pension liability will increase over the next three to five years relating to that one item.
I guess, is it reporting it under that line item of salaries and benefits? I mean, that part kind of gets to me, too. It seemed like it should be outside of that as a different line item, not lumped in as a credit or not a credit for
Because the unfunded liability is, in fact, a liability, so I'm struggling with how that reduced the expense of salaries and benefits. That's really what I'm struggling with in my own head.
Trying to think of how to
Just one of those assumptions they would have to account for in our accrual financial statements, not, you know, it's
Because, in fact, salaries and benefits were 5 million, right?
Yes.
The actual
The expenses were, right?
That's the difference between the dual basis and the government accounting. So, if you look at the fund-based statements, those don't take into account those, the net pension liability.
Yeah, I saw that.
Yeah, that's just going to have your pension contributions during the year. That doesn't change.
I guess maybe, I shouldn't, but what I try and do is sort of track these numbers from one statement to, and see where they show up on the next statement, right? And the same number isn't showing up, and so I'm confused, because I don't have a CPA.
All these GAZR requirements, how we have to shape these reports, what to include in one report versus another, I think it's creating more confusion than anything, but these are required reports, so we have to report it this way, with those assumptions and without.
Yeah, because it's kind of, to me, it's, you know, I guess this may be an offline discussion, you know, it's almost maybe even philosophical, but if it's a liability, how is it being reported as an offset to expense? It's just, it's an unfunded, long-term liability, and yet it's being used to offset expense. It just doesn't quite compute for me.
We'll have a seminar on that offline next, yeah.
I would appreciate it. I would just like to understand it, and I quite frankly don't understand it.
Yeah, it gets really involved in how that, those adjustments are made, and we have worksheets that we could definitely provide that.
I only have one other comment to make, and it's brief. You know, you referred to the page 26, the balance sheet, and this is just a complaint. It's a two-page table, and I would genuinely appreciate carrying the left-hand labels over to the second page, especially when they don't line up, when they're, when they're back to front. If these pages were side by side, our eyes could do the work for us, but here, our eyes can't do that work for us anymore, so flipping back and forth to see what's going, if you would be so kind.
Yeah.
Well, what I got didn't look like that here. What I was reading from our meeting, I guess.
Yeah, we can
But they did it here on page 26 and 27. Oh. Yeah. Hey, I think the labels should be on each page, in my opinion, but there you go. That is all. All right, do we have any other from the other directors? I do have something that I, this time I got to read it. Really, page by page, and I did notice that we did have, it's more a typo or a written mistake that I think we're going to have to do an amendment. On page 45, you are in the, with the, with the explanation of the City of Rancho Cordova developers' fees. I believe there is a misnomer here, because when you say the capital project fund accounts for the developer fees collected by the City of Rancho Cordova, it's not the district, on the district's behalf, see? Then it becomes confusing, which are legally restricted expenditures for specific purposes. The, and it says district collects, it is the city that collects the fee with building permits. So, that's pretty much just words that we need clarified and clear, so that we don't get confusion. So, if, I think, in that case, we'd have to work towards an amendment there, right, of this audit report. And then I do have a quick question here on, on the communication letter that you have, page three, where it was talking about the one, two, the third paragraph from the top. Beginning fund balances for city developer fee funds do not equal ending fund balances from the prior year audit report. So, eight, there's an 8 million adjustment that was made to reconcile beginning fund balances to equal the prior year ending fund balances, and then you did make a recommendation on that. Can you just explain that a little bit?
I could probably handle that one, if that's okay.
Oh, good. Page three of the communication letter, page three of the communication letter, third, third paragraph down.
Right, so we have an account set up. It's a pass-through account that the city, speaking of that language, of the description of that fund, the City of Rancho Cordova collects on our behalf from all the permits collected for park development, and there's a in-question on, on why both agencies can or should be reporting that in both their books. And so, for us, it was uncomfortable for both agencies to report it. They control the fund until we get it, so I thought it'd be a footnote or something to take it out, and then it was recommended by the auditors, heavily suggested that, no, 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 that has to be placed back into your financials, has to be reported as part of your financials. That amount is purposed for the park district, not the city. It's a pass-through account. And so, we put those amounts back in for that particular fund, and there'll be an offline discussion. I talked to Joe Arch about that with the city, so we'll both be on the same page, so both agencies are in compliance, but it was suggested that those be put back. We put them back in the financial statements, and there they are.
Thank you. Thank you. And then I wanted to just comment to staff, lots of hard work went into this. We have, I mean, this is a great financial audit here, that there were no, nothing that was mentioned that needed, you know, attention to. No findings. Matt, that's a good, good start.
We've come a long way in the last five years.
Yes, we have come a long way in the last five years. I know when, when we hit it, and there were like nine, 10, 11 findings, so it's really good to hear that. Thank you, staff. Good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just tell Brent we said hi.
You're so bad. All right, thank you very much, Mr. Jones. Okay, so we are now going to move on to committee reports. Item E.
Thank you, Chair Reyes. Item E1 is a standing committee report for Budget and Finance from February 8th.
Yes, and it's Director Lineback and myself that attended the Budget and Finance Committee meeting. Director Lineback, would you like to start?
Yes, well, two of the three items we went over are directly in this board packet here, which was, of course, the final audit, and the district financing plan, the certificates of participation for the pool project, and potentially for refinancing the Mather loan to reduce the overall rate, to save the district money on that. The last item, and so I'm not sure we need to report out more
Yeah.
Here as a part of the committee report, because these items are both being thoroughly vetted at this meeting. And then lastly was the budget cycle and timeline, and I especially appreciated the approach of having strategies about how to develop the budget with the ADA transition projects, the capital improvements projects, and all the different uses for the district's money to start in advance of the budget, having a vision of where you want this budget to go. So, I thought that was really good work, and I appreciated, you know, going over that at the committee meeting. Is that included in our board packet? I'm getting a, it's not, okay. I did so much reading over the last week.
I know. It was an overload paper.
Yeah, I wasn't sure how much of this I read before and how much of it I read after. So, anyway, that is the plan of the staff for the budget process, is to have a plan in mind ahead of time, to which you apply the available resources. So, that'll be my report.
That's great, yes. And one of the things that also came out from our meeting was, as we had noted, last year, we had a little bit of a challenge getting the audit early enough, so this is, this was really good, that staff was able to work with our auditors to get it to us earlier in the year than we did last year, and this way, we can really look forward and use it in our planning for the coming year. So, that was also a good come out from that. Okay, as Director Lineback had said, we are going to, we took care of the audit, and the other agenda item that we discussed is going to be handled with lease certificate, leasing certificates in regular calendar items, so we'll go ahead and get to that. All right? So, with that, we're going to go to item F, which is public hearings, and there is none scheduled, and so we will move on to our regular calendar items, G.
Thank you, Chair Reyes. Item G1 is to accept the independent auditor's report and financial statements for fiscal year 2016-17 as presented, and I'll turn it over to Manager Goodell.
All right, so this is, obviously Brett Jones from JJACPA presented on it, we had a discussion, and this is the formal procedure of having the board approve the audit itself.
Great. All right, so unless there are any other questions on the auditor's report, any questions or comments, then I would entertain a motion.
Chair Reyes, I just wanted to note that it would be approved as amended
Yes.
Since the document was changed.
Yes, we do need to make sure that the motion carries that, that, that we approve as amended, the city, the verbiage.
So, the fund description, right, that, and
Yes.
I think that was the only one.
Yes, that was it. Page 45 needs to be amended. Okay, so I do need a motion.
I'll move the Board of Directors to accept the independent auditor's report and financial statements for fiscal year 2016-17 as presented on February 21st, 2018, with the amendments to page 45
Wonderful.
As mentioned.
Yes, so it's moved by Vice Chair Yearwood
I'll second that.
And second by Director Sloan. Roll call, vote.
Director Lineback?
Aye.
Director Sloan?
Aye.
Secretary Dantzel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Yearwood?
Aye.
And Chair Reyes?
Aye. All right, on to G2.
Thank you, Chair Reyes. Item G2 is to adopt Resolution 17/18-28, authorizing a lease certificate of participation financing to fund the Cordova Community Pool Replacement Project and refund the outstanding 2007 capital lease, and I'll turn it over to Manager Goodell again.
All right, hello again. Good evening. So, exactly that, we're talking about funding our pool project. This is the financing phase, and a very exciting piece that I'm enjoying going through this process, and we're also looking to see if we can get a lower rate. We're at 4.55% with our current loan that we did in 2007, that we have 10 years left on, and so we're going to take what we have left in principle of that, which is about 2.3 million, and see if we can lump that into a larger loan, a 7.3, 7.5 loan with the 5 million for the pool, and pay that off over time again as well. So, tonight, we have available our consultants in conjunction with this process. We have Lizzie Foss, who's representing the underwriting and the rating portion of this process. She's from Brandis &amp; Tallman, a firm that we have used. If you recall, Rick Brandis was here, I believe, two years ago to talk about public and private placement with Lizzie. He has, he's responsible for distributing over $1 billion worth of municipal bonds since 1980, so this, this organization knows what they're doing. Lizzie provides the data that drives that financial modeling and schedules, and helps us with our decision-making. Also available, we have Scott Ferguson. He's an attorney, our bond and disclosure counsel from Jones Hall. He's been practicing since 1999, every year with Jones Hall, I believe. He's also an avid fly fisherman. It's amazing what you could find on Google, right? Scott, so. I have some other things, but they're kind of embarrassing, so I won't go into them. But both of them have been instrumental in assisting us during this whole entire process, and have just truly been awesome, and we look forward to continuing this, and today it kind of kicks off that with your approval, and so with that, I'd like to invite Lizzie and Scott up here to summarize and give some discussion, talking points about this financing structure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt, Chair Reyes, members of the board. I thought I'd walk through the resolution real briefly, and then talk a little about the financing structure, the lease-leaseback. It's a little involved, and just I wanted to make sure there weren't questions on that. So, well, I'll start with the financing structure. We're using a lease-leaseback structure, and the district's been working with the California Special Districts Association. They have a financing arm, a nonprofit corporation that they formed specifically to help its members, like the district, to do financings like this, and the corporation acts as the counterparty to the lease-leaseback structure. And the way it works is, the district leases a property, and in this case, it's the Heron Landing Park that we heard about earlier. District will lease that to the financing corporation in return for a one-time payment equal to the proceeds of the financing, which get placed into, in trust with the, with the bond trustee. the bond trustee, or the certificate trustee in this case. And in return, the corporation immediately leases that park back to the district in return for semi-annual lease payments. The lease payments correspond to the payments of principal and interest that go to investors. And the corporation never sees any of those lease payments. The documents assign all of the payments to the, to the bond trustee, the trustee, and then the trustee turns around and sends those payments to the investors. So it's a couple of players, but it's a way, under California law, that the district, using its power to lease property, can enter into this long-term obligation and get the financing it needs for the projects. The funds, as I said, they will be held by the trustee. The bulk of the funds, of course, are the project funds that will be used for the pool, and the staff will submit periodic requisitions as needed to the trustee, and then the trustee will disburse the money. Creates a good paper trail, and it's a kind of a safekeeping for the, for the bond funds, the certificate funds. That money will be invested, to the extent that it's held. It'll just be held through the course of construction, of course. Investment earnings will go back into the fund, be available to be used for the project. Couple other things, the certificates will be sold to the public, as I said, to the investing public through Brandis &amp; Tallman. They're acting as the, as the underwriter. They will purchase all of the certificates on the closing date, and then sell them to, or transfer them to the individual investors that they've lined up. But it creates certainty that on the closing date, you have a buyer for all of the securities. And as, as part of the public sale, one of the documents, the longest document, I think, probably in your packet, is the preliminary official statement. That's the disclosure document that describes everything about the certificates, the district, the district's general fund, which is the real security for the financing, and then it outlines various risk factors. I guess lastly, it is a general fund obligation of, of the district. The leased property, Heron Landing, serves as, not quite security, but it serves as the legal mechanism for the, for the structure. But there aren't revenues coming from Heron Landing that are part of this. It is a general fund obligation. Every year, when you, when you look at the budget, one of the line items will be to budget and appropriate that year's lease payments for this financing, similar to what's already being done with the 2007 lease that we're looking to refinance. And then I guess lastly, if today, the refinancing does make sense, if the market were to move at the time we go to market with, with the structure, such that there wouldn't be positive savings for refinancing that 2007 lease, we would, and the resolution contemplates dropping it out of the certificate of participation financing, and then we would work with staff to look to see if we could do another private placement with a bank at a rate that would generate cash flow savings. So, and if there are questions about the documents or the structure, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions?
Yeah, can you go page by page?
I can.
Just kidding.
One of the, one of the questions or clarifications that, that we had made was that Heron Landing is going to be the collateral, or pretty much the, the security. And should there be any improvement? I mean, since it will be leased off to another, to the leaseholder, or the, the park?
It'll be a CSDA.
The corporation, right?
Yeah, CSDA is the corporation.
Yes, the corporation, since it will be pretty much leased to them, will there be any concerns about building on the park while it is in the hands of the CSDA? Correct? Is that clear? Yeah?
So the lease documents contemplate that.
Okay.
Improvements can always be made to the leased property, as long as they don't detract from the value, and as long as the change in use, you know, you don't, as long as the board doesn't decide, we'd be better off putting an office building there, for example. So, and, you know, things do change. 30 years is a long time. If, if there were a decision made at some point down the line, that it made sense for the district to sell Heron Landing, there are also provisions to substitute another property that the district owns under the lease. And there's a process, you go to, you have to go title insurance, as we're doing here, but the process is all laid out. I've actually gone through it a handful of times for clients in the past. So there's, it's not locked up, and there certainly is the ability to, to add improvements.
Okay, and this will be a 20-year lease, am I right? How many year? 10, 15?
It's going to be 30-year.
A 30-year?
And which, which meets the qualification of being past the, or before the life of the asset expires, which in this case is the pool. So it's going to be, if we're able to get a low enough rate and include the existing loan, we're going to accelerate the first 10 years, so we're going to be doubling up payments to have that first loan paid off in the first 10 years of the 30-year.
Okay.
And then just have the remainder 20 years be just the pool 5 million to pay that off. So we'll have relatively large payments the first 10 years, and then not such large in the final 20.
And if by sheer chance, we won the lottery, or something like this, we had a windfall, then there is no holdback with being able to pay it in full?
Yeah, it depends, because, you know, interest rates, in this case, are relatively low, so it's almost free money, and if it's down the road, it might not make sense to pay it off and utilize the money for-
That's right. Something else.
Other projects, correct.
All right.
Matt, what is, what is the actual bottom line for the interest rate? Is it?
We don't know yet, so they have to still take that.
What would be, what do you think? Because I know, I just read something about interest rates going up.
Yeah, Lizzie might be able to speak to that. She, she watches the market, probably just checked an hour ago, right?
Already bottomed out.
No, I'm happy to, I'm happy to discuss the, kind of, the recent movement in the market. Today, the Fed minutes came out from the end of January, which kind of sparked some movement in the market. The economy is doing well, and when the economy is doing well, bonds kind of get spooked and interest rates go up. So some market feedback is that we've, the market's overreacted. We might see it settle down a little bit. The Fed did say they anticipate having three interest rate hikes this year. That can always change. It's always dependent on how they feel the market is doing. So other market feedback is that these, the spikes in rates that we saw today do factor in kind of the foreseen three interest rate hikes already.
Okay.
And we've seen that happen before, and I believe it was 2014, we saw that happen. So interest rates, interest rates are up, you know, in the last month or so, but in the general terms, and historically, we are still very low. So it is still a great time to finance, and we will definitely watch the interest rates to monitor that 2007 lease, to make sure that we can generate at least 3% net present value savings on that.
Does the amount of the loan affect the rate? Because the more money you put, you borrow, would you get a better rate? Or it doesn't matter?
Sometimes it goes up.
You know, I'm not 100% sure on that. I don't believe it has a huge impact on it, but I can ask Rick that question.
Well, can an individual buy one of these certificates?
Yes, yes.
Just have to have your phone number, is that right?
Yeah, I have a stack of them right here, so. I have some Girl Scout cookies, my daughter, and a stack of COPs.
Well, they pay interest annually, right? Is, can you give us a brief timeline? This, tonight, if we approve this, we approve moving forward with seeking these certificates of participation, is that correct? And so what would be the timeline if we move forward from tonight?
Sure. We are looking into the credit assessment. If that, we have a couple of questions. We have a, you know, a conference call tomorrow with Standard &amp; Poor's to kind of clarify a couple of points. But if it is seen as a viable path to go down, we will apply for a credit assessment. That takes a couple of weeks. For our understanding, it's confidential. If the district were to see the rating and, and not like it, and not want to publish it, we wouldn't have to. These are all points we will clarify tomorrow as well. So that will take a couple of weeks to three weeks, and then we finalize the preliminary official statement. We give that out to investors. We allow them to look at it for a couple of weeks, and then we price the bonds. So as of now, we're kind of estimating the first week of April to price, and then close mid-April.
All right. And we're looking at 5 million for the pool? And, and of course, whatever is the balance, if it is, if it is to our, to our advantage for a lower interest rate, the Mather, right?
Correct.
Okay.
And we're going to have the funds held in it with a trustee, so US Bank is who we notified as our trustee, and so they'll, they'll hold the funds, and we'll request them as construction takes place until they're spent. And we have to do that within three years, technically. So as long, so construction has to take place within three years for those funds to be used.
Well, we hope we'd have the pool on 2020. We are going to have it. Yeah, all right. Okay, any other questions? If there are no other questions, then I would like to entertain a motion.
I will move that the Board of Directors adopt Resolution 1718-28 authorizing a lease certificate of participation financing to fund the Cordova Community Pool Replacement Project and refund the outstanding 2007 capital lease.
So it's been moved by Director Lineback and seconded by-
Second.
Secretary Danzel. All those in favor?
Director Lineback?
Aye.
Director Sloan?
Aye.
Secretary Danzel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Yearwood?
Aye.
And Chair Reyes?
Aye.
Thank you.
So motion carried. Thank you. Find us the best.
And thank you, Lizzie and Scott. I think you guys have been fantastic to work with. It's been a real pleasure learning about this whole process, and Matt has just been fantastic with this whole process. So thank you, we really appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, so we're on to G3, which is?
Thank you, Chair Reyes. Item G3 is to authorize the district administrator to execute a contract with Jones Hall, a professional law corporation, in an amount not to exceed $83,000 for special and disclosure council services relating to certificates of participation. I'll turn it over to Mr. Goodell again.
All right, so to, to perform the duties and responsibilities, we had to hire a consultant, Jones Hall, and so this is, this contract is for us to perform those duties. And it's, it's an amount that's not a fiscal impact on our budget. It's going to be rolled into the loan. Cost of issuance will include this, so it'll be part of our overall loan proceeds. And again, it's not going to impact our current budget, but it's for an $83,000 contract for bond and disclosure council services.
Okay. So do we have any questions from the board? Saying none, then I would like to entertain a motion.
I move the Board of Directors authorize the district administrator to execute a contract with Jones Hall, a professional law corporation, in the amount not to exceed $83,000 for a special and disclosure council services relating to certificates of participation.
Moved by Vice Chair Yearwood and-
Second.
Seconded by Secretary Danzel.
Director Lineback?
Aye.
Director Sloan?
Aye.
Secretary Danzel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Yearwood?
Aye.
And Chair Reyes?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carried. All right, so now we're going to item G4.
Thank you, Chair Reyes. Item G4 is to approve the recommendation to rename the fund source for Community Facilities District 2016-01, currently known as Measure J. And I'll turn it over to Administrator Larkin.
Okay, we are here with a name that is recommended by the PRMID Oversight Committee and staff. The analysis was, there are three names out of about 20 that were voted on as the top three to be chosen. The first one that they had an option for was Prime, and, the Prime Fund. It was Parks and Recreation Investment, Maintenance, and Enhancement Fund. The second was My Parks Fund, Investments for a Better Community, and then J-CARES Program. So out of those, the PRMID had met on February 12, and decided that they would like to recommend to the board to approve the My Parks Fund, Investments for a Better Community. It would also be tied to, of course, otherwise known as Measure J, so that there's no confusion as to where those funds are going. If approved tonight, what we'll do is we'll have our signage made for special projects that we're working on using these funds, and those signs will be posted at those sites that we're completing projects at going forward. So with that, the recommendation is for the board to approve the naming of Measure J, funding to My Parks Fund, Investments for- gave me a notice to do a non-extension of the current lease agreement and issue a request for a proposal with redefined terms, financial terms and conditions, and continue to negotiate with existing shooting center vendor to amend the current lease to address redefined terms and conditions. So I had renegotiated with the current vendor out there during the winter months. He gave notice that he is not interested in continuing on as the vendor. And so from there, we were going to go to an RFP if he wasn't going to come with an agreement at that time. And so we are here tonight with the RFP that we'd like to submit to the public to receive bids for someone to operate the Cordova Shooting Center. So with that, you have the RFP in front of you, as well as the revised lease agreement that we would have attached to the potential vendor, and we will be looking to send it out most likely within the next week, so that we can start the process going. So with that, I'll take any questions or comments that you have.
I have one question. Right off, you start with, with the proposal for the development. It's already there, so they don't have to develop this whole thing, but is it more like redevelopment?
And, yes, I guess. It is basically, we're asking for tenant improvements in order to come onto the site and operate the shooting center, because of the condition to which it's in right now is deemed unsafe and in need of some major repairs.
Any questions on the RFP? Nope.
Chair Reyes, I had a note that there might be a correction to the language, 90 days versus 120.
Sorry, yeah. So there was a correction. Thank you, Terry, for picking it up. We, there was a correction in curing any default on the district's behalf. So there was language in there that said 90 days to cure the default, and in fact, it was intended to be 120, which was in parentheses. So we're going with 120. We're just going to strike the 90 days and leave it at 120 days to cure the, any defaults that may occur.
Okay.
As an amendment.
All right. Any other questions or comments? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I move the Board of Directors authorize the district administrator to release the request for proposals for the development operations of the Cordova Shooting Center.
Moved by Director Lineback, seconded by Director Vice Chair-
I'll second.
Vice Chair Yearwood.
Director Lineback?
Aye.
Director Sloan?
Aye.
Secretary Danzel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Yearwood?
Aye.
And Chair Reyes?
Aye.
Motion carried. All right, so now we're on G6.
Thank you, Chair Reyes. Item G6 is to authorize the district administrator to execute a memorandum of understanding with the City of Rancho Cordova for community enhancement, Measure H funding, and State of California housing-related park program funds for the Sacramento Valley Livestreamers Irrigation Project and all associated project documents. And I'll turn it over to Planning Manager Laura Taylor.
Thank you, Chair Reyes, and members of the board. Okay, a little background on this. The City of Rancho Cordova approved Measure H funding and State of California housing-related park- park program funding for the Sacramento Valley Life Steamers Irrigation Project last spring. The state grant announcements were awarded in the fall, and so we're, it's taken a little bit of time to get the MOU together between the city and the district because we had to wait for the approval of those state funds to go forward. So the district staff in the meantime has been working on the design for this, the Sacramento Valley Life Steamers Irrigation System, and we've been working in conjunction with the Sacramento Valley Life Steamers Group to ensure that the plans work with their operations. And we have here in the audience tonight, we have Dennis Grammuth and Allison Berry from Sacramento Valley Life Steamers.
Wonderful, welcome.
So, thank you for your patience in sitting through all those other agenda items to get to this point. So the design will use more efficient, will use water more efficiently on the site, and currently SVLS has some automatic irrigation, but they also use hoses and sprinklers to handwater many of the areas in the irrigation, in their fenced-in area. So this will ensure that we can more, better monitor the use and control the water use as well. So the combined grant amount is 105,000, and CRPD is providing matching labor with design and construction management services. So if the memorandum of understanding is approved by the Board, then the district staff will finalize the design plans and specifications and publish the plans for bidding by the end of March. And if bids come in with the available budget, within the available budget, then we'll award a contract to the lowest bidder, and the MOU requires that construction be completed by October of 2018. So that's my report, and if you folks have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
I have a question for clarification, more or less, for the MOU. I was reading the MOU, and I think I needed a little more clarification here. Maybe it needs to be spelled out a little bit.
Okay.
In our packet on page 295, for my director's benefit here. I was, when I was reading this, it said that the total project cost had been determined to be approximately 141. City has contributed 30,000 in its community enhancement fund and HRPG, which is also...
So I get, so you would like clarification, 105,000, or is it possible that if there were to be expenses over 105,000, would the city consider up to 30% increase? That's your question, right?
That is my question, exactly. And that the 30% is applicable to the, not the 30,000, but the 105, you know?
Right.
Okay.
Got you.
So that's what I need spelled out.
Okay, and we can certainly do that. And right now, the, our latest cost estimate, because we've been working on value engineering, we are at a base, what we expect a base bid to be, about 85,000. Knock on wood, construction costs are going up. It's a little hard to predict right now at this particular time. And then an additive alternate component that could be as much as 20,000, that would bring us right into that 105.
And you know what? Amen to all this, you know? I just wanted us to be able to have a little more clarity?
Okay.
With, with the amount maximum. District Administrator's aware that I had some concerns with that because then, and it doesn't even spell out our end.
Okay.
Of course, I'd had to make the deduction, 141 less the 105 was 36, so.
Okay.
And it doesn't put any limit to our end.
Right. So would you, I would ask the question, can you approve it contingent upon that clarification? And then we can follow up with that, rather than bring it again another month?
Yeah, I have no problems with doing that. I just wanted to make sure that there was, it's more a city format that needs to be clarified a little bit in all this.
Okay.
But, you know, I have no problems unless my directors have any problems. I have no problems with pushing it forward, making sure that the amounts that CRPD is, is expected to be able to cover is spelled out.
Great.
So I'd like to make a motion.
Sure, wonderful.
I'm not sure what it is. I move the Board of Directors authorize the District Administrator to execute a memorandum of understanding with the City of Rancho Cordova for the community enhancement Measure H funding and State of California housing-related park program funds for the Sacramento Valley Life Steamers Irrigation Projects and all associated project documents with the new wording.
With the?
Amended wording.
Yeah, with the condition that?
The condition.
The wording be clarified on the maximum amount.
Right, good. Exactly.
Moved by Director Sloan, seconded by? I'll second that. Director Lineback?
Director Lineback?
Aye.
Director Sloan?
Aye.
Secretary Danzel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Yearwood?
Aye.
And Chair Reyes?
Aye. Motion carried. Okay, what we're going to have to do is we're going to stop for a 10-minute break here at this point, so it is currently 8:05.
3.
8:03, and we will be back at 8:15. How's that? Just to make it clear. All right, thank you.
So we are now going to item H.
Thank you, Chair Reyes. Item H1 is Board Member Reports on H1B. There is no training for this past period.
So H1B, we have the reports. Shall we start off with Director Lineback?
Yes, I pulled up the agenda for the PMRID meeting just to remind me about what they spoke about. I attended that meeting as an observer only because, you know, I was just interested to see, you know, how that committee is developing since they had really only a superficial role to play before the My Parks Enhancement Fund was voted in by them. So they were informed that their operating guidelines are being revised by district staff for their approval to reflect more accurately the role that they have and when their meetings are and how they're conducted and things of that sort. They were given a list of the capital improvement projects. It indicated the ones that had already been funded in this current year and the prioritization for the next year. They were invited to review that list of projects and give their feedback to the staff about them. There was, you know, each, since the PMRID is zoned, obviously, the representatives of the individual zones were looking to see where their zone fit into that plan, which is their job. They were also given an overview of that large ADA study that was done by the district so they could see the scope of the things that the district has to deal with going forward to bring district facilities into compliance as things are improved. And they did indeed vote to rename the Measure J as the My Parks Fund, which this Board has seen fit to alter slightly and then move forward with. And I hope they don't all resign because of that.
So they didn't vote on it, they gave a recommendation?
You're right. They gave, they gave a sense of the committee to recommend to the Board their overall, as you say, recommendation. It wasn't, they, they don't have any decision-making capacity there. They are an oversight committee. I also attended the Cordova Pool Outreach Committee, our public meeting, and I, my overall impression is that it was a much more favorable sentiment on the part of the public about this project. They could really see forward progress and see that the district, in fact, is going to be able to move forward and put, as it has been so eloquently stated, water in the pool. And then I also attended the, is it the Cordova Community Council that puts on the luncheon? Or is it the Chamber of?
Both.
Both, okay. And our esteemed administrator was the featured speaker, and he gave a really nice overview of the history of the district and well-prepared presentation, but then he also had to field questions from the audiences, some of which were, you know, not softball questions, and he did very well. So I enjoyed the luncheon. I enjoyed seeing the history of the district, which, you know, we don't see every day. And I didn't grow up in Sacramento, for instance, so there you have my report.
Thank you, Director Lineback. Okay, so Director Sloan?
February 6th, I attended the Rancho Cordova Athletic Association meeting, and also there, representing the district, was Jill Nuns and Brian Hendricks. The Hall of Fame Dinner is going to be on Saturday, October 13th, 2018. Is that homecoming? The discussion came up about a flag football league, which we talked about at the previous meeting, and more information was given to the association by Jill regarding the CRPD's league, which basically is targeting kids who just aren't interested in playing tackle football.
Mm-hmm.
Which seems to be a progression, I think. It's a new, people like to play football, but they don't want to have concussions. I think that's the, the name of the game. So, and our league would be from five to 16-year-olds, correct? And it would be August through September.
Hmm.
Yeah, I thought that was interesting, and I think I might have someone who was interested in playing. Not me.
Yeah, over 16.
I might coach. There's also the youth basketball league, which is really taking, you know, it's got like, I think their last count was about 80 kids or something, or? So, I mean, it's, I think it's going to be a popular thing, maybe it was less than 80. You remember the number they said?
About 80.
About 80? So it's only for fifth and sixth grades. So that might be something that we could take to the next level in the future, seventh, because there's a lot of the kids who don't, don't play on the junior high team. They talked about they, how the CRPD helped the Allstrom Park Rancho Cordova Little League renovate the turf there, when they were very thankful and leveled the, the field all, and so lots happening through our CAA. The next thing on my list is the outreach meeting with the pool, which I, I know, we can see what the, the public's vision is, and it's a little bit bigger than what we can really do right now. So I'm keeping my fingers and toes crossed that we get support by maybe just three other people, is all we need, right? Just three people's support to help us go the distance that we need to go to maybe make this a little bit larger facility, if you know, I know what I mean? No, no, you don't get it. Okay, well. Okay, well, anyway, I'm just hoping that the, we get some type of support, some sponsorship, somebody can beef it up. If not, we need to address the, I guess it's the eight lanes compared to 10 lanes and that kind of thing, so. The next thing was the luncheon, and you're right, Pat, he did an excellent job. He spoke well. It was interesting to see the, the start of the district with the three parks that were created. I actually had time to talk with Neil Archer, and I said, Neil, when you were District Administrator, did the public show up and tell you how to plan your parks? And he said, no, not at all. They were just happy, happy to see their money being used and going, you know, and parks being built, and they showed up in hordes to, for the ribbon cutting.
Wow.
I got lucky.
Yeah, right. Nowadays, there's just a lot more involvement, you know? It's, there's so many voices out there that we just have to listen to them all, otherwise we're, we're not being able, we're not doing our job. So at least we're listening to the voices. With that, I think that's all.
Thank you, Director Sloan. We're going to go to Secretary Danzel.
Unfortunately, because of soccer season, I have been out of the public's eye, and now that soccer season's over, plan on getting back into it. Unfortunately, the school grabbed me today and said, hey, you used to coach tennis for us. You need to come back part-time. So at least my part-time is only two hours a week, so that I can deal with. But yeah, so we're moving forward.
Good. Thank you very much. Vice Chair Yearwood?
Let's see here. Yeah, on January 30th, I attended my very first LAFCO Special District Advisory Committee meeting. Very interesting to sit with a lot of the, not a lot, I don't know, many of the special districts in our area and to see how small some of them are. There's a water district that's only like a one square mile. There's a park district that's only two parks. But a very interesting group of folks. Everybody was asked what their major concern was for, you know, the future, and I shared our struggles with funding improvements, capital improvements, and upgrades in our existing parks. Most of the water districts complained about closed-down wells because of pollution. A lot of people had issues with the minimum wage increase and lots of people retiring in the near future, so they were worried about that. Really, there was lots of things talked about, but two things that kind of stuck out was there was a gentleman there from SMUD who indicated that SMUD, starting, I think sometime next year, is going to go to rates that are based upon the hour of the day, that kind of thing, to where they're going to start charging consumers, residential, commercial, everybody, what it costs them to supply their energy at that time. So of course, energy during the week is going to be more expensive during the day than at night and on the weekends. So that's potentially having, will have some financial impact to us with the rates start fluctuating, depending on what time of day it is, what time of year it is, that kind of thing. That was something he said that they're looking at and will be coming sometime in the near future. And then Gay Jones shared with them, there's some kind of, she's now the president of California LAFCO, and there's some, something being formed, I can't remember exactly how she worded it, that the unused redevelopment funds, they're looking to allocate those back out to the people who they collected them from. I don't think we pay redevelopment fees, do we?
I don't think so.
Would we have paid any redevelopment fees to where we might potentially get some money back?
I don't think so.
So, yeah, we're, we're in, I don't know, she said that they're looking to see how these funds are going to be dispersed, so. It was about that, that meeting in a nutshell. I also attended the pool outreach meeting, very well-attended. A nice presentation, as I had said. I think it would have been nice if it was a little shorter, but a lot of the same questions, a lot of the same concerns. I think there was a lot of people that realized that, yeah, it would be great to have this huge, wonderful complex there, but it doesn't make sense where it's at and how to support it and how are we going to... it, and how are we going to fund sustaining it over the years? So there were some people that have kind of changed in their opinions, but they're still the ones that want their 50-meter pool. They've got to have that, so. But it was a very good meeting, very productive, a lot of good information shared. And then, of course, I also attended the luncheon with the keynote speaker, Administrator Larkin. Yes, the only thing missing were the lights, the bright lights on him and perhaps a water board. But anyways, yeah, they had a lot of questions for him, but it was a nice presentation and very well-attended and nice, nice job. That's all I got.
Thank you, Vice Chair Yearwood. On my end, I attended very proudly the CPRS District Two Awards and Installation Banquet, and it was really very nice that we were able to receive the award for hand landing. Staff was there. It was impressive for me to see that our staff is out there doing their, you know, volunteering as we ask to be leaders in our region, and they do stand out. We had Heather and Brandy. They're both, they were both on the board. I think Heather's leaving, but Brandy's staying on, I think? I'm not sure. But they served, and that's so important to us, that we're there serving. And then, of course, it was, you know, I had with me the best tour guide here, because everybody knew our district administrator, Larkin, who was the president about two years ago? About four years ago. So that was really very nice. And Steve was there? What's the name of our HLA?
Canada.
Yes, Steve Canada was there. And it seems like we see him, because of all these awards and all that, we look at each other and we say, remember when? Remember when we started? And it, there were times where it was really, how would you call this, challenging, but look how we've come and look at how well it's come out. So that was really very nice, and I really was very proud to receive the award. Laura was there and Jerry was there, so it was really nice to see our staff out there. The community outreach meeting, the Cordova Pool Replacement Workshop was impressive to me. I think the consultants did an excellent job of being able to present, also to field questions. I think it's nice and easy to want, but then we have to wake up to the reality, and I guess that's why we're here, is because we have to make the hard decision to see to it that whatever the decision is, is that we build the pool, a community pool, that will serve our programs and our residents, and, you know, more of the majority, I guess. That's how it goes. It was very clear out there that we, the park district, was very open to sponsorships or partnerships with either private or the city or other public or civic agencies. So that was really good. It was nice to see it well-attended. It was nice to hear the comments. This time, I noticed a lot of them were more kind of like specific and realistic. This is what I'd like to see. If you can have one or two more lanes, if we can have. It wasn't heavy, there were a few pie in the sky, but I think, I think I'm looking forward to seeing what the consultants will come up with. And I'm excited to know that it's out there. Year 2020, there's going to be water in our pool.
It already came up?
So, that's good. The last one was attending the Cordova Luncheon with our keynote speaker, Administrator Larkin. He did a great job. The PowerPoint was really good. Fielding, questions that just came out, I think he did an excellent job there, and I think there were a lot of people that came up to us that were impressed, happy, felt good about being able to see him and know who he was, and they felt that now they can come up to him. And they'll be on his ears here, telling him what they need and what, and he'll do a good job with that. I've not had as many compliments about our choice of district administrators I have had this time, so it's really nice to be, to have our leadership well-respected out there. And that's it for Board Member Community Activities and Meetings Report. Okay? So we will move to item H2.
Yes, thank you, Chair Reyes. Item H2A is to nominate a member of the Board of Directors to serve on the California Association of Park and Recreation Commissioners and Board Members, Board of Directors, for a three-year unpaid term and Adopt Resolution 17/18-29, supporting the nomination. I'm very excited to bring this opportunity to the Board. This organization is not new to us. We've been a member for many years, but this is a new opportunity to serve on their Board of Directors. This organization, much like CRPD, is actually tied quite closely with CPRS. They have one of their main meetings throughout the year at the CPRS Annual Meeting, so there is that connection. But likewise, they provide advocacy statewide, education, and scholarships. We were notified that there are several openings on this Board of Directors. The terms are for three years. They meet, as I said, three times a year, and it's split between northern and southern California regions. If the Board desires to make a nomination, staff recommends that we do adopt this resolution to support and memorialize that action. As I mentioned, they are planning on making this decision at the CPRS Annual Conference in March, and they are requesting a couple of items from our nominee should we desire to do that. I am recommending that that be provided no later than March 2nd, so that we can submit that in a timely fashion. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So if there are any directors that would like to serve, or if there is one that we would like to nominate, I have expressed myself to be willing to go for this position if you guys choose to nominate, because I see we're all kind of like covering different boards here. So want to make sure that the Cordova Wreckon Park District is out there.
Could I just ask a brief question? I know on CSDA, they do not, in fact, pay for even the conference fee for attending their conference for their board members. I was just curious, does this organization at least, I know it's an unpaid position, but do they at least cover the conference fee for their board members? Do you know?
I don't know. I would have to look into that.
I don't think it's a deciding factor. I was just more curious than anything else. But, well, I would move that the Board of Directors nominate Chair Reyes to serve on the California Association of Park and Recreation Commissioners and Board Members, CAPRCBM, Board of Directors for a three-year unpaid term, and Adopt Resolution 17/18-29, supporting the nomination.
I'll second that.
Moved by Director Lineback, seconded by Director Sloan.
Director Lineback?
Aye.
Director Sloan?
Aye.
Secretary Danzel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Yearwood?
Aye.
And Chair Reyes?
Aye. Thank you. So now I have to write, I have to get back to you by March 2nd. All right, thank you. We're going to move now to, and thank you, fellow board members, for your confidence that I will hopefully respect.
Back that says otherwise, we'll go in then. So the next part, we are, speaking of homeless, we are working with the Folsom Cordova Unified School District Homeless Family Services. They're based off of, what is the name of that street? Vineyard? No, Zinfandel, sorry. In the old school, there's an old elementary school there, which is, yeah. So we met with them last week. Gail and I walked over and saw their operations. They have a very large storage unit out there that has coats they collect, everything. And so we have decided to have them be our little sister, and basically what we'll do is we'll collect things year-round at all of our facilities. Their biggest need year-round are backpacks and underwear. So we're going to be having containers for all of us to be able to ask the community to contribute to their success. So I'm really happy and proud of that partnership that we're starting there. I appreciate your support in the chamber luncheon. I thought that was a really great event. It was an honor to be able to speak about the district's history, as well as where we are today and where our future is going. So it is very exciting. We had a great PRMID Oversight Committee meeting this past month, which I'm really excited about the energy of this group. There's a new person, and Danielle was fantastic. She did an orientation for him, so he was prepared coming in. He was voted on by this board at the previous meeting, and so it was his first opportunity to serve. He's very enthusiastic, and I think he's lending a new kind of energy to that particular group, so we're excited about that.
His name is Ryan Brown?
Brown.
And he's representing?
Rosemont.
Okay.
Yes. So he's a great addition to the group. Just a reminder, Form 700s will be due by April 2nd, 2018. Please fill those out if you have not already. The Board Docs software, we are scheduling the consultant to come back out to do additional training so that we can look to implement it. And based on that training, to see how good we are with the software, we'll decide whether we're going to implement it in either April or May, possibly March, but that's really aggressive. So we'll see how that goes. We talked a lot about the finance, and I just want to say thank you to Matt. I mean, he has been working tenaciously and making sure we all understand this. I'm not a financial brain person, so I've learned a tremendous amount, and Matt has been fantastic with speaking their language and making sure we are getting the best deal possible with our finance plan for the pool. So thank you, Matt. Some recruitments that are underway. We have a facility supervisor that has been offered a position, and the candidate will be announced at a future meeting. The marketing and communication specialists have second interviews tomorrow. We have a total of three coming back for second interviews after seven initial interviews. We're in recruitment for a park maintenance worker one, a park maintenance worker one in irrigation and fields, athletic fields, and just general landscaping. And several part-time positions will be coming on board to support our summer camps and lifeguards. We had, well, we have a winter staff recognition event coming up on February 27th. We are kicking off our health and wellness theme. We are going to practice what we preach, so we're going to do a health and wellness activity, healthy potluck, and you're more than welcome and invited to join us on February 27th at lunchtime. Park Services is working with the SETA Group, which is Sacramento Employment and Training Agency. They were contacted by SETA to see the district if they could use free labor, and of course, we could use free labor. So Jerry hooked that up, and they have been working successfully with our maintenance crews. And we had four SETA workers, and they're doing the same type of work at the Cordova Golf Course and also throughout the Park Services. So great connection, great partnership, and a great opportunity for those folks to give back to the community. We're doing some new signage also in our parks. We are matching the county ordinances to make sure that the parks that are signed match the ordinances, so that if we need to implement any type of citations or anything, the county sheriff can go onto the property and actually issue those citations if it's posted. So we are looking to post those in strategic plots all around the district. We had a very busy season for, or month at the Methers Sports Center. The Union Sacramento FC hosted their annual winter turf invitational tournament on January 6th and 7th, and the tournament hosted 31 teams from all over northern California. There was a basketball clinic with 20 participants, and street hockey started again with 45 participants.
Wow.
The barn projects are coming along. We're getting three new goats that will be arriving at the end of February, and the rabbits will arrive in April. So I always have to give you updates on the barn. There's two there now?
Three goats.
See? You've got to love the barn. We're activating the barn here.
Two.
There you go. The hideout is actually doing quite well. They've done promotional activities at Mills Middle School in Mitchell, and we have invited and have now five additional members that have signed on with us. So that's very exciting. We also have at the hideout special guests. Over the last few Thursdays, Nick and Mavas are AmeriCorps volunteers from Folsom Cordova Community Partnership, and they've begun to mentor the program, kids in the program. And additionally, they're playing with the kids and having a good time and teaching them about success and junior achievement programs. So that's another great partnership that we're looking to add to our repertoire of using AmeriCorps volunteers and adding some new components to our after-school program. Remember back on the polar plunge? That was also this month, if you can believe it, January 6th. We had over 30 brave souls taking the plunge. It was the biggest year yet. And yes, our banana crew did represent on Good Day Sacramento. It was amazing, the news coverage. And yes, kudos to staff for their spirit here. I really appreciate it. In park planning, we have been meeting with the county, and we continue to meet with the county on discussing our NEXUS study and especially the park fees associated with that NEXUS study to defend those fees. We have another meeting coming up next week. So it is moving forward. It's just, we really want to hold tight to our fees that we have in our NEXUS study, as demonstrated through developers that have already come through at this point and have decided that those fees are fair and reasonable and are signing off on their projects in that way. So we have some consistency going forward with that. On page 319 of your packet, there is an update on our grants. Of note, the district plans to partner with other organizations, like I said, with the Williamson property. We're also looking to do batonk court lighting. The batonk folks were out here a little while ago, and there's a need for lighting out there for security reasons. Also, the senior center is looking for kiln at the senior center. And we also will be looking at potential CDBG grants for adding restrooms at Lincoln Village Community Park, which we've also heard is in need. Some other pieces are, on page 322, there is invitations to upcoming activities that, please note, we have quite a lot that's coming up that you are more than welcome to join us on. And then also, just a special note, there is a new calendar. It lists the year of all of the things that we're doing, thanks to Jill. She was able to plan the entire year in advance, and I would suggest that you might want to put this on your refrigerator or put it in your personal calendars, because it will list out the entire year as to what you can attend and what you should look forward to. So with that, that concludes my report. If there are any comments or questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Any comments or questions? Director Lineback?
Yeah, I actually, going back to an item that you didn't particularly highlight, but the new business plan for a legacy foundation. I'm still going to hammer on, were those people who put in applications for the PMIRD, did they express any interest in this organization?
So, yeah, we did reach out to them, and the answer is, at this time, we're pending it, because we have had a consultant come in and give us an idea of where we need to go with this particular situation. The idea is for us to, in essence, approach a renaming, dissolving the existing structure of that business as it stands today, and then go forward with the new business plan, target marketing, specific recruitments for people to enter onto a new, more legacy foundation type of product. So the business plan itself really is dictating some of the nuances with the agreement that someone would be recruited to sit on as a board member. So we're in the process right now, is I think we have the document itself. We are pretty confident in it. We have to just communicate to the existing members that plan, and then from there, we'll go forward with dissolving and then going forward with a new approach to recruiting new members to the legacy foundation.
But it would be a com-
More comfort. More comfort. I mean, we comfortably dressed, relaxed. Doctor, uh, Vice Chair Yearwood was asking if he could come in his PJs.
If you would. If that's what he'd like.
All right, it's going to be at the Marriott. Oh, that's right. Thank you, Director Lineback. Okay, so unless there's anything else, I would like to, a motion to Vice Chair Yearwood, seconded by Director Dan, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we adjourn to the next regular meeting for Wednesday, March 21, at 6:30. Thank you.
Where are you going, sir?
Looking at you.
Was I?